All right, let's go to the agenda tonight is we only have one. And I would like to introduce, is Dr. Rogers here?
Yes.
Oh, I see him, all right. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Andy Rogers, Superintendent of the Liberty Elementary School District. It's nice to see you again. He will present an update on the state of the Liberty Elementary School District and also discuss the potential issues and policies impacting the City of Goodyear's public, private, and community education partners. Before you start, the opening was wonderful. And the parents were all so excited and the children, and it was so well done. And I'm still going to take a tour of the school. I have that on my agenda, okay?
Wonderful.
All right. You have the floor.
Mayor, thank you for being there for our ribbon cutting at La Spriessus Academy, our newest school, which is in the City of Goodyear. And it was a kind of an overwhelming experience. We had 300 students to start there, but we probably had like 500 families there. And we had grandparents, aunts, uncles. It was a huge crowd, so that was a great event. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and audience members. I'm Dr. Andy Rogers, the Superintendent of the Liberty Elementary School District. And Liberty serves, has three schools in the City of Goodyear, but all six of our schools have Goodyear students. We are an open enrollment school district. Four and a half years ago, our governing board kind of embraced the idea that we needed to really look at choice and open enrollment as kind of features of our school district. And so at this point, when a family comes in to register, they are allowed to choose which school that they attend within the district. And we kind of challenged each of the schools to come up with an identity, a signature program. And so now, four and a half years later, we have six schools, and they each have a signature program, and families get to choose. And we do provide transportation. We divide the district north and south. The Hila River is our kind of halfway point, so north of the river, we'll transport families in district to any of the three schools north of the river, same south of the river. So we do provide transportation, and we find that supports that choice and open enrollment. In terms of Liberty, our mission is very simple and clear, which is we're committed to creating a world-class education for each and every student regardless of their circumstance. And I think that mission is very ambitious, and it really speaks to what we're about. Liberty is about kids, and we're about each and every student, and giving them a world-class education. And we're very proud that our schools are able to do that. Our vision, want me to click?
Yeah.
There we go. Mission, we're on to vision. Our Liberty Elementary District will prepare students to achieve at high levels and leave eighth grade ready for success in high school and beyond. They will have the academic, social, creative, and communication skills necessary to engage in academic and career pursuits that will reflect individual accomplishment and contribution to their community. This vision statement is a part of our strategic plan that the board adopted this summer. And one of the interesting things about our strategic plan is it was a very grassroots, developed document. We surveyed staff, parents, and community members with online surveys. And we would ask a question, and people would respond to it. And we got hundreds of responses to each of our questions. And then all of that, we really got a feel for what is it that our community valued and wanted. And that was, we didn't have, we had one small community forum towards the end. All of our input was gathered via electronic survey, and it was wildly successful. And what people liked was, we asked them one or two questions, it took two, three, four minutes to respond, and then a week later, you got another question. And over a series of weeks, what we found was, people will kind of give you their input as long as it doesn't take a lot of time, and it's very user-friendly. So that was something we learned with our strategic plan, and that's where this vision statement comes from. Our strategic plan has four areas. Student achievement, and that was the highest priority. When we took input from our stakeholders, they said student achievement has to be the most important thing. That was very clear. And these are, in order of importance, quality teachers. Teachers really make the difference, and we're fortunate to have a high-quality teaching staff. The challenge today, and it's a challenge every school and school district faces, is to get and keep high-quality teachers. There are currently, Dr. Don Covey, the County School Superintendent, told me that there are, you know, 3,000 vacant positions in the State of Arizona. And I would say that's true, and that doesn't even get to the bigger issue, which is quality shortages. We're very particular in our district about the caliber of teacher that we want in front of kids every day. And to find that quality and to keep that quality is increasingly challenging. We have every position filled going into the school year, which is quite an accomplishment. And I know there are districts nearby that have 50, 75 unfilled positions. And what that means is, a lot of kids have a long-term substitute who is their primary teacher to open the school year. And it's extremely difficult to fill those positions. Next is strategic use of resources. And finally, innovation and choice. So those four areas are the four things that we, as a district, are committed to working on. And what we've found is, by focusing on those four things, that is how we're creating world-class In terms of the quality teachers, we have to make sure we hire and retain those high-quality teachers. And a couple of things we've done recently is, we've really promoted National Board Certification for teachers. So we support cohorts of teachers, provide release time, and we have a growing group of nationally-board certified teachers in the Liberty Elementary School District. We also are providing stipends in hard-to-fill areas. So if you're a junior high math or science teacher, you are paid an extra $2,500 on your base salary because you teach and have the endorsements to teach, because those are extremely hard to fill. So those are just a few of the small efforts that we're making to really develop and keep those great teachers. Strategic use of resources, we have, we've been through, just as the city has been through, I mean, our budget was cut by 25% about seven years ago, and very little of that has been restored. My per pupil, how much we get per student, is less for this coming year than we received in 2007. And those cuts that were made at the state level have not been restored. And we are doing more with less. And what it does is, it pushes us to look at other revenue sources. We were one of the districts that converted our schools to district-sponsored charter schools. We generated $2.4 million additional revenue for the district by converting three of our schools to charter schools. The legislature, once they realized that school districts were figuring out a way to adequately fund their schools, closed and no longer funds that. And we had to cut our budget for this school year by $2.4 million to account for that lost revenue.
Can I interrupt you there?
Absolutely.
So why did they close that? Because I was unaware of that.
So the funding was discontinued for this fiscal year. So it was not this last legislative session, the year before.
Joe?
Do you know what the status is of the suit, this 300-plus million dollars, I guess the state owes you? Where that happens to be? I know it was in the courts, they were going back and forth trying to negotiate it. Do you know where that is right now?
I recently pulled up a PowerPoint that I chaired with staff and community four years ago. And at that time, I said, "We anticipate getting the funding from the inflation factor lawsuit by, within a year or two."
That was four years ago, right?
Four years ago. The current status is the same, which is, you know, the judge has ordered into mediation, and negotiations are ongoing. And, you know, they're unable, you know, to share any details beyond that. You know, a colleague of mine pointed out the fact that the revenue that would be generated by the state trust land proposal from Governor Ducey is almost a mirror image of the amount that required to kind of fully fund based on the inflation factor lawsuit. So we would love for that to kind of be addressed before the next fiscal year, because that $2.4 million loss we had to account for, we're using about 900,000 of reserves this year just to maintain our programs. And we do have an override on the ballot in November, which will actually be an increase from 10% to 15%. We reduced it to 10% four years ago, just in recognition of the tough times, you know, the whole community was facing. But we've had to go back now to the voters and ask for an increase in our override just to be able to have the funds to maintain our programs. And, yeah.
Is there a deadline or a timeline of when that issue? I mean, it sounds like it's going on forever, but has the judge put any type of timeline where these have to be resolved, or he'll resolve them? Anything along those lines?
No. Well, I mean, I think there is no, I mean, other than, it's at the judge's discretion of, you know, are they making satisfactory progress? You know, and we're all just waiting, and, I mean, we know that we can't count on those funds until there is an actual agreement. So we budget within the revenue and resources that we have, and, you know, and we prepare for the worst and hope for the best, so.
You know, I just, I just think it's a shame, as it goes through all that time and the discussion, and I don't know what the power of the judge is, whether it kind of stands, hey, here's the timeline, if you don't resolve it, I will, and here's what you have to do.
Yeah.
But I guess in the real world, it doesn't work like that. I wish it did, because I know a lot of the funds have been cut from all the schools, and it's hurting our kids, so.
Yeah, and it is an interesting, this was about 12 years ago, I took a finance course in my graduate program at University of Washington, and our professor knew a lot in terms of the national landscape and said that 37 states had adequacy rulings from the courts around the state's obligation to adequately fund education. It now is up to, I think, 43 or 44. That the unfortunate reality is, is that you really have no recourse other than the courts in terms of to, you know, adequately fund education. And it literally is, almost every state in the nation has some sort of court ruling compelling the legislature to adequately fund education. And we're, we have our own right now, so.
Okay. Dr. Rogers, I'm going to stop you. If you don't mind us interrupting like this.
Nope.
I just want you, for the record, to state this for me. And every time a superintendent comes up, I ask the same question, or I ask you to make a statement. Would you please tell the public what an override is? That an override doesn't mean you're not making your budget. So could you just kind of, because the word override, and I'm going to keep harping on this, I've harped on it to every superintendent, to every principal, that you need to change this wording, because it is a negative. Override means, to most people, you're not spending your money the way you should, you're not doing the job you should be doing. We shouldn't have to give you more money on an override. So just for the public, so we put it down on the record, okay?
Thank you for the question. Yes. Override is the term we're required to use, which is really, and the way I explain it is, we're asking the local taxpayers to increase their taxes to be able to have additional dollars that go directly into their local schools to have higher-quality schools. So it really is a local tax to supplement, you know, the state budget. And I think my previous conversation about, we're facing a real challenge in that we're not being adequately funded. And there actually is a current suit being started by the several school districts, including the Glendale Elementary School Districts, which is, local taxpayers are suing the state on the premise that they are being taxed with budget, with bonds and overrides to compensate for the inadequate state funding. And the taxpayers are frustrated that the school districts are resorting to, coming to them to increase their taxes. So an override really has become a source of funds for us just to maintain our basic program because of the inadequate funding that is coming from the state level.
So our senators and representatives are saying, "Cut taxes, no taxes." They tell the public that, "No taxes, no taxes." But essentially, through the back door, they're causing more taxes.
Yes.
Essentially, yes.
They just don't have to be the ones to put it out there.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, I mean, we, I am not thrilled about increasing, asking for an increase in our override from 10% to 15%. But I face the choice of either cutting programs and teachers and services to kids, or asking the voters to invest in a higher-quality education locally and to pay for that. And we've had very good support from our local voters, because they value their local schools. So I'm very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
And the last area was innovation and choice. We talked about that. So each of our schools has a signature program, and that is something innovative that sets them apart. And so I'll kind of do a quick run-through. Our six schools, our Liberty Elementary, Estrella Mountain Elementary, Rainbow Valley Elementary, Westar Elementary, Freedom Elementary, and La Spriessus Academy. La Spriessus Academy is our new school, and if anyone here has a chance, come by and see this school. It is a visual and performing arts school. It is beautiful. It has a theater, it has studio labs. I also want to express my appreciation for city staffers, their tremendous support in terms of planning, zoning, inspections. This was a tough project on a very aggressive timeline, and we had tremendous support from the city. It was a little rocky in the beginning, but boy, did things get smoothed out, and very grateful for the support in terms of that project. I'll do a quick run-through with each of the schools has their signature program. Liberty Elementary is a center for agri-science education. It is one of the first in the country to have an elementary agri-science program. They have their own garden, and it really is, their curriculum is aligned around agri-science. Estrella Mountain Elementary, this is in the City of Goodyear, it is an authorized international baccalaureate, primary years and middle-years program. And this is a very distinguished program that, again, is a choice for parents, you know, that is internationally recognized. Rainbow Valley Elementary is a Covey Leader in Me school. This is based on Stephen Covey's work, and it is a program about leadership development for students, and it is a wonderful school program. Westar Elementary, in the Australia community, is a STEM school, science, technology, engineering, math. They also like to add arts, so they call themselves a STEAM school more often than not. Freedom Elementary is also a STEM school. And La Spriessus Academy, our newest school, opened, and there's our picture of the ribbon cutting.
Oh, yeah.
So, there we are, right there, cutting the ribbon. And it is visual and performing arts, and will be K through 8, but it also will be, has a dual-language immersion Spanish program that started this year kindergarten. So we have two classrooms that are dual-language immersion kindergarten, and that will add first grade next year, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, over the years, so that that'll grow with the students. And so when a family comes to enroll in Liberty, they get to choose from these six schools and these different programs. And it is very exciting, and it is a tough choice. One of the things, our schools, we started this last January, is what we call Tuesday Tours. So every Tuesday, our schools have a designated time where they give a tour to prospective families. And they get to learn about the school, visit some classrooms, have all their questions answered. That has been a really popular opportunity for families to be able to learn about. And anyone is welcome to come to those. So if you get on our website.
Roger can take me on a Tuesday, and we'll go see.
You can, you can take a Tuesday tour at any one of our schools. And it's about a 30, 20- to 30-minute tour, usually led by either a staff member or the principal, it just depends on the school, who leads that tour. But it's very informative, and you could, if you really were ambitious, you could go to every school on a Tuesday, because their, their times are spread out for families. And what we find is, a lot of families will pick two or three schools and go and check them out. And they like to school shop, you know, and so it is a great opportunity for them to learn all about a school in a very brief amount of time, so.
Take your time. As you know, I'm a big fan of the school district, because I have two children that go to Estrella, and it is a wonderful school. And I am heartbroken to see what it's had to do to education and for the people, and this isn't for you, but this is so the public knows, that these schools still have band, they have art club after school, they have school newspaper, there's a drama club, there are school sports. These teachers and this administration, they're there in the late afternoon, early evening hours, they're there on weekends with these kids doing these extra activities, and they are not paid for that. So I get very, very upset when I hear people say, "Well, we're just going to cut administration. You're spending too much, doctor." And being a parent there, I know that's not the fact. I see that. And I see how our schools have been hurt, and parents are bringing, you know, we're buying, you know, literally reams of paper for the teachers, because these teachers do not have the tools that they require. And I know I'm preaching to the choir in this room, but I think our public needs to know that we need to support our schools, because like what you said, if I'm, my husband's in real estate, so when he wants to sell a house in Estrella, what's the first question before someone wants to move to Goodyear they're going to ask about? Schools.
Yes.
And I, I don't know how we can help you more, but if there's, because obviously, we don't have control of the legislature. But just let us know what you need, you know, and how we can help you, because we have great schools, we have a great district, and I'm probably your biggest fan, so I'm just thrilled with you. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We have to beat the PR system. We have to beat the newspapers. We have to beat the statistics. Keep pounding Arizona. They're in it again, what, where we are. So they group school districts together, and it's a shame. And so, you know, I've always felt, and I think this council does, it's important to get the word out. And I've almost thought that we ought to, from our city, have our own little newsletter on schools, and put every now and then information on our different schools in a positive manner, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate the support, and the city has been wonderful about events and really promoting the schools. And, you know, the All-American City, that was a big part of, you know, the schools were an important part of that, and that is greatly appreciated. And I think the thing is, is that the people of Arizona always support schools. And I think we have to just continue to kind of force the issue of saying, this is what the people want. They want good schools in their community, they want good schools in their state, and we just have to continue to, you know, fight the good fight to really honor the will of the people. And, you know, I'm, you know, I could complain a lot about the legislature and everything else. They are elected by the people, and they are doing the best they can to, and we have good relationships with our local legislators, and they're fighting for our schools, and they've always been there for us when we've asked for their help. And it's just raising that really commitment, because I don't think people are aware, like our capital budgets have been cut for this coming year. This is our sixth year in a row of cuts. This year, my capital budget is cut by 85%. My allocation for capital budget should be 1.4 million. I'm getting a little over $100,000. And just to put that in context, this is the sixth year in a row of these cuts. So my bus fleet, you know, which I would use my capital budget for repairs, but also replacement of buses. You know, I have buses that are 20-plus years old, that have 400,000 miles on them, that run great. But last Monday at 4:00 in the morning, my Executive Director of Support Services was putting Freon in buses, because our AC units were a little bit on the fritz. But we didn't have anybody to do that, because we had one mechanic and one position posted, and our mechanic, our one mechanic had a hand injury and was on light duty. So, you know, my head maintenance guy, my Executive Director, is out there at 4:00 in the morning keeping the buses running. But for me to buy one bus is more than I get for my capital allocation from the state this year. I can't even buy a bus. AC units go out. We had to, the gas line at Liberty had a leak, actually had multiple leaks, and we had to replace it. We had to apply for emergency funding from the state, and the cost, we were funded, but we couldn't do any work, and we had to apply for emergency funding from the state, was $150,000. That is more than my capital allocation for the entire year. And that was to do emergency repairs on a gas line, which makes the difference between being able to operate the school or close it until it's fixed. So, I mean, I think, I don't think people are really aware of the difficult circumstances that every school is facing, whether it's charter schools or public school districts. I mean, we're all having to be incredibly resourceful.
Well, Dr. Rogers, thank you. And, you know, all of us here, I know, feel your pain, and we hate to hear those kinds of stories. I believe in collaboration, you know, that creativity, whatever we can think of to do together. And I, and I really do think that letting our community know of the great schools that we have here are truly important. You know, I found it very interesting, he was telling me earlier before this meeting, that the way they were reaching out to families was through Facebook. And so, you know, that's, that of course is the age and the social media that certainly reads that. And so anything we have on our website would probably hit them. But then you have another demographic of our community that likes to read paper, you know? And so it's always that, that combination of how we get the word out and which, what to do. And so I think that as much as we can be creative and trying to get that information out is so important. And I thank you for coming and letting us know what's going on in your district. I think that's very important for all of us to hear.
I just have one more question on this, or just one more statement. So how do we, how do we, I don't know how the ranking is throughout the United States. And that's where it really gets the West, and it's all the Western states. If you look at the latest one that was put out, it's California, it's Nevada, it's us. How do we neutralize that? Is the other side of the country ranking in a different manner? It's just very perplexing. So it's hard on people that are new, are new people thriving in Arizona, they've come from a very strong school district with high ranking, and now they're becoming taxpayers for our students. Many of them are retired, so I can understand the concerns. They're looking at those numbers. So I guess that's where, it's really a mountain decline as to how to, to get the public behind you when we see those numbers in it. So I'm, you know, I put that out to you, because it is, it is difficult on all of our part to try to explain, "No, no, we, in our area, we really have good schools," and that's kind of hard. I know that in our area, and I know when companies come, and Arizona lost two very good companies in just the last few months, with about 3,000 workers, to go to another state. And the reason they did is because our education system. They didn't think that their employees were going to be able to find a school that was going to be satisfactory. And so it's important to us as a city to be sure that we really know our, each of our schools in our city, that we can actually tell the story, economic development can tell the story by the name of the school, not the state number, because it just seems to be, it's a big barrier.
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's a state challenge, because you're right. I mean, if you look at the local schools and local school districts around here, we have some exceptional schools. And I guess that's where, like, our mission statement is, you know, every student deserves a world-class education regardless of their circumstance. And I think the thing is, is that my opinion is that Arizona right now is about some kids getting a high-quality education, oftentimes at the expense of other kids. And I think that's where other states are out competing us, which is their commitment to all kids having that quality education. I think in Arizona, there's been this push towards choice to an extreme that, and we're all, because when I talk to charter school folks, they're as underfunded as we are. And, you know, in Arizona, and I think that's the piece, is that, you know, there has to be that commitment to all schools, all kids, because when a company comes and looks, they aren't saying, "Look, you know, yeah, if you live in the right neighborhood or right district in Arizona, our employees are going to have their kids get a good education." They don't want to have to worry about that. They want to know, if I, if we come to Arizona, wherever our families choose to live, they're going to have access, because the, the system of education is prioritized and so. going to have access because the, the system of education is prioritized and supported. Because it, it's preschool, K-12 universities, we're all being starved in terms of the funding here. And, you know, and, and that's where, I mean, we could sit around and say we can't, but we've chosen to take the path of saying, "In Liberty, we're going to provide this education and we're going to figure out how to get the revenue and, and fund this level of education." I mean, when we converted your charter schools, there was a lot of people that, other districts that were like, "What are you doing? You're crazy." And I was like, if I, and we got two years of additional funding, but we were able to invest that money in these programs and now we did it as a startup. So our schools were getting a million dollars additional funding to support these programs for three years. Now the money's gone, they're continuing these programs without one penny extra. And that's just, but we needed those startup funds, so we, you know, and we're going to the voters, you know, for our override and, because we have to, to be able to maintain that quality. And, you know, there, we've been successful, but I'm telling you, every single year, I'm sweating bullets thinking, "How am I going to do it this year?" And we've done it now five years running and, you know, but it, and I think that's the thing is that, you know, you can be victims and say, "Poor us," or you can go out and do what you can and have some measure of control over, but then also continue that fight at the state level. It has to be a priority of the state to adequately fund education.
Thank you. Any other questions for us? Thank you very much. It was a great presentation and we love your enthusiasm and your spirit.
Thank you very much.
And the new school is a real gem, so I'm looking forward for our council to take a visit. So thank you very much. Let's give a round of applause.
Yes, thank you.
All right, I'm going to adjourn this meeting so we can start. Do you need a quick break? You're just fine. What we're going to do is we're going to move everything up to the dais, so it's going to take us a few minutes. So, meeting adjourned.